Thank you councillors, we'll get this meeting started at 5.30. Before we begin, we, the Greater Shepparton City Council, begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional owners of the land, which now comprise as Greater Shepparton. We pay respect to their tribal elders, we celebrate their continuing culture and we acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. As a notice to the gallery, please note that this council meeting is being streamed live and recorded in accordance with the council's live streaming and recording of council meetings policy. All care is taken to maintain your privacy, however, as a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in the public gallery is assumed your consent is given in the event that your image is broadcast. For more information, the policy is available on the Greater Shepparton City Council's website. Do you have any apologies councillors? Do you have any declarations of conflicts of interest?
Mayor, thank you. Item 9.9 on page 90, the Moore Street activation of the mall, I'll have to declare a conflict there. And we'll leave them in.
Any other conflicts to be declared? Confirmation of our previous minutes, I have a recommendation, page one, do I have a councillor wishing to move it to the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on the 21st of February 2017, circulated, been confirmed? If you've got it, Mr Mayor. If you're councillor Hazen, do I have a second or councillor Gevenetti? Do I have a second or two other councillors who just had any debate to that, or comments? All in favour? Against? Page six councillors, oh sorry, page two, we have item 6.1, the Australian Botanic Gardens Special Committee Member Resignation and Appointments. There's a recommendation on page two, do I have a councillor wishing to move that as a motion? Councillor Abdullah, do I have a second please? Councillor Keith. Councillor Abdullah.
I can move the recommendation on page two as a motion. And the recommendation, there are two recommendations, one is about the acceptance of the resignation of Dr David Chu and the other one is about the applications received.
Would you like to speak to that motion?
First, I would like to thank David Chu for his contribution and it's great to see community's interest and passion in converting the former landfill into very impressive Botanic Gardens. About the new applicants, Jenny Hullahan, of course, she will bring five years of knowledge and expertise in this area and it would be good to retain this knowledge and passion. About Collyon McCracken, again, he was closely involved as friends of the Botanic Gardens and his professional experience and qualification would benefit the ongoing development of Botanic Gardens. It reflects a strong sense of community, positive and engaged community basically, and also an increase in the number of memberships from five to seven reflects that this project is gaining people's attention. So without volunteering, of course, this stage and shape of the Botanic Gardens would not be possible.
Thank you councillor Abdullah. Councillor Keith.
Dr David Chu's contribution, I think you on our behalf as well.
Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? And any councillor wishing to speak for? Okay.
I'd just like to congratulate the volunteers for all the hard work that they do. And secondly, I'd like to just give a point over to the committee that they are tasked with a very large responsibility and that is to undertake administration of this huge council project. It is an incredibly large project and they will come under the scrutiny of councillors as ultimately councillors are the ones responsible for this project overall. Occasionally, committee members will be required for face-to-face meetings and they'll present annual reports and financial records. So without detracting from the manual task at hand, which they do such a great job at, these administrative tasks are equally as important and a major factor in the responsibility of section 86 committee membership.
Thank you councillor Summer. Any other councillor wishing to speak for or against the motion? None, councillor Abdullah, any closing comments?
No.
All in favour of the motion? Against? Page six councillors, item 7.1, the Greater Shepparton Women's Charter Alliance Advisory Committee Membership Appointments, do we have a recommendation on page six? Do we have a councillor wishing to move that recommendation as a motion? Councillor Abdullah, I wasn't looking at you intentionally but...
I would like to move this motion, this recommendation, on page number eight, page number six, sorry about that. And it's about, the recommendation is about endorsement of Greater Shepparton Women's Charter Alliance Advisory Committee Membership Application for Ronnie Drewett and Felicia Dean. And it's also about thanking the outgoing member, Denise Stewart, for her contributions to the Greater Shepparton.
Do I have a second for the motion?
Making the motion.
That's the summer, now councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, I would like to say that the Greater Shepparton Women's Charter Alliance Advisory Committee, gosh, it's a long one, is becoming an important forum for local women in order to benefit from this association and also to give back to the community. First, I would like to thank and acknowledge the contribution made by the outgoing member, Denise Stewart, who was associated with the committee for a short period of time, but she made impressive contributions to the committee. One of her initiatives around the idea of organising public speaking competition for young female students was very much appreciated and it delivered some good results. So that's something that we hope that in the committee, that will continue this trend and will encourage young female students to build up their confidence through public speaking forums. I would also like to talk about the recommendation for applications from Ronnie and Felicia. Both of them are highly engaged and active community members and I would strongly support their application. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Abdullah. Councillor Summer.
I'm also very pleased to endorse the two new members who were put up to us today. They're very well-known, as councillor Abdullah said, they're very strong women, very community-minded women. The committee itself focuses on diversity, active citizenship and gender equity and these two women embody all of that. The committee has grown in calibre and performance since I was a member back in 2012 and they're charged with organising events amongst other things like International Women's Day, which was well-attended and lots of fun, poetry, life stories, nomination for Woman of the Year. Congratulations, I'll just do a plug here for Lisa Mackenzie, who will have her name on a plaque in the Queen's Gardens. She's done great work and she's worked with Community Connect, the Fairley's Foundation and more recently, the Lighthouse Project. So that's being rewarded because she was awarded Woman of the Year. This committee is just one example of how council works hard to close the gap and create equity amongst all its citizens.
Good, thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? Councillor Abdullah, any closing comments?
Yep, I agree with councillor Summer's comments, just a closing comment that the very fact that we received nine applications for two membership positions, it just shows that the committee is gaining attention from women in our local community, so that's a fantastic outcome.
Yeah, yeah, I support both your comments on that, as I was also a member on that committee charter champion year before last, so all success to them. And now other councillors, sorry, you've just had your closing comments, all in favour of the motion? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, item 7.2, endorsement of nominees for induction into the Greater Shepparton Sports Hall of Fame, do I have a councillor wishing to move the motion as printed on page nine? Councillor Gevenetti? Page nine and 10, sorry. Indeed. Councillor Gevenetti, do I have a second? Councillor Keith? Councillor Gevenetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to move the recommendation contained on pages nine and 10 of the agenda. I would also like to take this opportunity to congratulate the Shepparton Sports Hall of Fame Advisory Committee on the work that they've done over the past few years. Councillor Patterson has been a member of that committee for some years and is still a member. I think that the group of nominees that the committee has selected are excellent and I would just like to give members in the audience an idea as to how they were selected. And the Sports Hall of Fame is designed to recognise and celebrate significant sporting achievements of Greater Shepparton residents. The Hall of Fame has potential to capture sporting achievers from the Golden Valley and become a regional sports hall of fame. These achievements include participation and success in sport at a national and international level and inductees will include players, athletes, coaches and officials and administrators and others involved in the sport at an elite level. Nominations were open to anyone who has been a resident of Greater Shepparton and who actively participated or supported sport in the area prior to or during achieving national or international level sporting accomplishments. This will be the first group of nominees that will come before council. The committee will continue to operate and will look at the next level of sportsmen who will be inducted into the Hall of Fame throughout the next few years.
Good, thank you councillor. Councillor Keith.
Look, I'd just like to support that as well, the Sports Hall of Fame is a proud recognition of some of our most successful athletes. It will be wonderful to revisit their success and celebrate their contribution and their support. Growing up here in Shepparton, I can remember many of these elite athletes and their success. So I'm looking forward to that Hall of Fame and sharing that joy again with them and revisiting that success. I think it's a great contribution from our community and something that should be acknowledged in history.
Right, thank you councillor Keith. Any other councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Is that, did you want to speak against that councillor Abdullah?
No.
No?
Nope.
Just jumped the gun there, did you? Any councillor wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Patterson.
Yes, I appreciate councillor Gevenetti's comments, but unfortunately, I've only been on there, haven't been to a meeting yet Bruce, I haven't been there for a long time. It's a really great concept and it really does, as Kim is saying, it really does relate back to our youth. The amount of great athletes that had come out of this region, Maxie Carlos, for instance, when I was growing up as a kid, I can remember him very well, Grace Edwards and Glenn James, my old football coach, you know, some magnificent names there. I'm really looking forward to getting in. The biggest job we have to do now is try and find a home for the Hall of Fame, which there's lots of possibilities, but it's something that really, I always say, if you don't recognise your past, you haven't got a future. And I believe this is a great past, we should be proud of those people, they've represented us very well and we deserve to give them some recognition. So I'm looking forward to it.
Good, thank you councillor Patterson. Any other councillor wishing to comment? Councillor Abdullah.
Just a small comment, that it's of course very encouraging to see this initiative and recognition of achievement in sports goes hand in hand with the Greater Shepparton Council's aim for our region to be recognised as Victoria's sporting capital. So that's one. And the other one is, in particular, I'm very pleased to see that out of 27 inaugural members who are nominated for the Sports Hall of Fame include 13 women and 14 men. This reflects a good gender balance in our sports achievement and recognition and it's a very healthy and encouraging trend. This would be a good incentive for local women and men to get involved in sports of their choice and avail the existing opportunities. So well done.
Great, thank you councillor Abdullah. I wish to add a comment too to this, I'd just like to recognise former councillor Kevin Ryan's contribution to this committee. Both him and myself were obvious, as it was inaugurated last year, I think, or until months ago, I can assure you, there was many, many weeks in being spent working out exactly what criteria should be used in selecting the applicants and the final people who will be recognised. So I know that the job ahead of the committee now is still quite huge, so I wish them all the best, but I'd just like to, as I said, recognise councillor, former councillor Kevin Ryan for his chairmanship of the board. Councillor Summer, do you wish to add a comment?
I would like to add comments. First of all, I'm really pleased that it's been so popular in its first inaugural year, it does show that we've been down the right track. There's sports of all different kinds, 15 different kinds, varying from pistol shooters to Paralympians, it's just terrific. There's an inaugural ceremony coming up, scheduled tentatively for August 4th, so hopefully people can clear the calendar for that. But ultimately, it comes down to council promoting sport, which is such a positive thing on so many levels. So, one, it's great for public health, we've always been such a sport-oriented region, we have an endemic of public obesity, unfortunately, particularly in childhood, and these ventures could help to turn that around. It's a perfect complement to our state-of-the-art sporting precinct, which is being built, and our proposed basketball stadium. It's a terrific way to recognise local sporting heroes, you can turn into role models. And it's also really exciting to be looking for a new location, it could be at the existing sports stadium, Sam, or somewhere we haven't thought of yet, but we're really showcasing this region so it can position us as a sporting capital of regional Victoria.
Good, thank you councillor Summer. Councillor Gevenetti, would you like to make a closing comment?
Sure.
Good, thank you very much. All in favour? Against? Item 7.3, the William Cooper Memorial Statue, there's a recommendation councillors on page 14, do I have someone, councillor Patterson, would like to move this recommendation as a motion? Do I have a second, councillor Summer? Councillor Patterson.
Ah yes, William Cooper was an amazing person, I believe when you read his biography, you'll realise he was probably before his time. He was responsible for the establishment of NADOC Week, which is very successful now, especially in this area. He established the Aboriginal Advancement League. He was a representative in Parliament and one of his biggest tics, as far as I'm concerned, he petitioned a German consulate regarding the prosecution of the Jews. Now, that's a man that's well and truly before his time. We should be very proud to have him associated with our town and by putting a memorial up in a very, very open place, that people can be aware of his deeds through the past, I think it's very appropriate and fully supportive.
Thank you councillor Summer.
I'd like to reiterate councillor Patterson's remarks, that this was a great man who's achieved a lot, many great achievements and I'm thrilled to be part of a council that have the opportunity to honour the life and work of this man. Traditionally, we haven't, as a mainstream society, been cognisant to the achievements of Aboriginal pioneers, but we have this opportunity to put William Cooper front and centre in a public place on his traditional country. So this will inspire to pay respect to traditional owners, it'll inspire future leaders, it'll help combat racism, it'll support the rights of Aboriginal people as a whole and remind us that equity and justice are fundamental human rights.
Thank you councillor Summer. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Any other councillor wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Hazen?
Mr Mayor, I think the history of William Cooper, yeah, very significant in Indigenous history, but very significant in Australian history at the same time. We know the stories of the walk-off from Kammeraganda and his role in that and obviously his leading role in the establishment of Indigenous community here in Greater Shepparton. So it's appropriate that he be recognised and in a lot of ways, we're dragging the chain a little bit on this one because he's been recognised elsewhere, including by the State of Israel, with a recognition in a very public place there. And the comments that were made about before his time, he was one of the first people in the Western world to recognise the issue of what was happening with the Jews in Germany at that time. Unfortunately, other people and nations around the world didn't take note and respond accordingly, but it is appropriate and I think that the request that the William Cooper Memorial Committee have made to this council is something that we should approve and move on as quickly as possible. At the same time, recognising that whatever the design of this statue was ultimately going to be, it'll be life-size and the design will be agreed upon by William Cooper's descendants. And of course, that'll be, hopefully, significantly a role there played by Alf Turner, he's obviously a relative of William Cooper's and the more that we can involve family and the community in this design and installation, the better it will be.
Good, thank you councillor Hazen. I'd just like to add that I think we should note the great financial contribution of the Victorian Jewish communities in actually erecting this statue. They're, I think, I'm not sure on the actual figures, but I'm quite positive they've contributed a major part of the actual financial commitment to erecting it. And there's ISIS as well, absolutely. So without their contribution financially, this probably couldn't have happened, so thank you to them. Now, sorry councillor Gevenetti. Councillor Sutton, did you wish to add?
Oh, I've been reading a little bit about him lately and he was an amazing person, so I think it's fair and good that we're recognising him with a life-size statue.
Right, thank you. Now other councillor we should add? Councillor Abdullah.
I'd like to add that by supporting this recommendation, the community will benefit, it will be one step forward in our long journey of bringing the Indigenous and non-Indigenous communities together and building a relationship of mutual respect and understanding. It will be a symbol of pride and recognition for our Indigenous community and it will be shared by the larger mainstream community. It will of course bring awareness about our Aboriginal history and recognition of contributions of William Cooper towards promoting rights of Aboriginal people and diversity, so it's a good step in the right direction.
Great, thank you councillor Abdullah. Councillor Patterson, would you like any closing comments?
No, it's all been covered, thank you.
All in favour of the motion councillors? Against? Page 17 of your agenda councillors, we have item 8.1, asset valuation and revaluation policy, we have a recommendation, any councillor wishing to move that as a motion? Councillor Oraswari, second please. Councillor Gevenetti? Councillor Oraswari?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, short and sweet. This is an example where we identified that we didn't have a relevant policy to cover off on this particular asset valuation and revaluation, so we formulated a policy and it's now before the council.
Indeed, it is, thank you. Councillor Gevenetti.
I can't have added much more than what councillor Oraswari has said, but it was a recommendation from our audit that this revaluation policy be adopted and we're just following that process.
Good, thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? Councillor Summer.
I just thought I'd put some clarity around what this policy actually is. It delves into determining the valuation method used to assess our assets, the condition of the age of the assets, so that we can work out depreciated replacement costs and the frequency we need to reevaluate as well for non-current assets. It is straightforward, but now we comply with the processes within the local government sector.
Thank you. Any other councillor wishing to speak for or against? None, councillor Oraswari?
No, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, all in favour? Against? Motion carried. Page 19 councillors, item 8.2, contracts awarded under the allegation and status of contracts advertised and yet to be awarded, February 2017, or up until, do I have a councillor wishing to move the recommendation as printed on page? Any pages?
I'll move recommendations from there.
Thank you councillor Oraswari. Do I have a second please? Councillor Patterson? Councillor Oraswari?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, the cornerstone of the Local Government Act is accountability and transparency and this notice of motion fulfils those requirements because it's there for the public to see in relation to contracts awarded and requests for tenders advertised but not yet awarded and they get a snapshot in terms of the contracts that are going to the various infrastructure and other areas that the council operates within.
Good, thank you councillor Patterson.
I don't know how I can follow that, but I'll try and I'll probably concentrate on the tenders not yet awarded, some very big ones coming up and there's quite a few of them, probably one of the bigger ones is the New Shepparton Art Museum, stage two concept design, which should be very big of course, yes, and there's quite a few coming up, so looking forward to being able to deal with them.
Good, any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For councillor Oraswari?
No, no thanks, Mr Mayor.
All in favour? Against? Carried. 8.3 councillors, on page 22, the February 2017 monthly financial report, I can hear Mr Titzel clearing his throat.
I'll move the recommendation, Mr Mayor.
On page 22, councillor Oraswari, the recommendation is that the council receive a note the February 2017 monthly financial report, do I have a second please? All, there's many of them. I'll pick councillor Sutton. Councillor Sutton. Councillor Oraswari.
I'll invite Mr Titzel.
Titzel.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and three to the councillors. I'll just talk about operating performance to start with, so our operating performance are otherwise known as accounting surplus, slightly behind year-to-date at this point in time, however, we're still forecasting that by year-end, our result should have improved and will hit the forecast that we were expecting. Materials and consumables year-to-date are high at this point, however, this is a timing issue due to some large expenditures that we've made in the recent months for prepayment of software licensing and those sorts of things which we're processing at this point and that'll correct as we go through the remainder of the financial year. Our forecast year-end result has improved largely due to additional capital grants that we recognise through our operating statements and these grants are predominantly in the area of road grants and together with the increase in supplementary rate income that we've seen, we're forecasting that that will flow through to a better result than, a marginally better result than originally forecast in the original budget. Reminding councillors, however, that some of this is offset by the lower user charges that we've received through the year from the Cosgrove landfill. In terms of financial health, our working capital is very healthy at this point in the year with the working capital ratio sitting at about 184% and councillors, you'll recall that the Victorian Auditor General's office considers 150% and higher as low risk. Year-to-date cash balances are strong and currently we have about $33.5 million sitting in cash with an average rate of return of sitting at about 1.96%. That's translated into $556,000 worth of interest income that we've received to date. With regards to capital works, at the end of February, we'd spent $14.34 million compared to the same time last year, that's a little bit under, we spent $15 million roughly at the same time last year, however, we do have a lot of capital works in the pipeline within excess of $21 million worth of work that's actually been committed through orders at this stage and there are tenders, as you saw in the previous report, that are yet to be let. Also pleasing to note is the asset renewal expenditure is tracking as we expected and remains above 100% at 108% at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr Titzel. Councillor Sutton, did you wish to add anything to that? Sure.
Positive.
Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? No, for or against, I don't think there would be anything, no. Councillor Summer or councillor Gevenetti?
I just want to say, Mr Mayor, that I think Mr Titzel's given a very good synopsis of the finance report, being unaware that it would be dropped on him at such short notice. But one of the things I would just like to point out that is a concern, although finance will be tracking quite well at the moment, the decrease in user fees at Cosgrove landfill is an issue, we're down $4.08 million at the moment, less of course, the reduction in EPA fees that we would have been paying on that landfill. I know council staff are going to be speaking with the contractors pertaining, to all of the contractors that were using Cosgrove and we hope very much that in the very near future, we can get them all back on board and dumping their rubbish where it belongs.
Yes, in our landfill. Thank you councillor Gevenetti. Councillor Oraswari, would you like any closing comments?
No, thanks, Mr Mayor, it's all been said.
That being said, all in favour? Against? Motion carried. Item 9.1, the memorandum of understanding, Chamber of Commerce and Industry, page 25. Councillor Summer, would you like to move the recommendation as a motion?
I'd love to move the recommendation as a motion on page 25, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Do I have a second? Councillor Patterson? Councillor... Councillor Summer?
I just want to say it's been a long-term criticism of this council that we do not engage more closely with external bodies when it comes to strategic planning for the Shepparton CBD. Whether that's true or a perception, I can't comment, but that is what I'm hearing. Where the Chamber of Commerce, the Shepparton Showme and council's Economic Development Department have largely been playing a silo part, whereas by pooling resources and strategies, we could have a multi-pronged and aligned approach to improving economic outputs in the CBD. Ten thousand dollars per quarter, which is what we're voting on here, it's not a great deal of money and I do commend the Shepparton Showme Committee for their cooperation in shuffling the funds, it shows a great deal of goodwill and partnership. Most, if not all, local chamber organisations around the country are in some way funded by their local council and we haven't been doing that, so that makes this a long overdue partnership in my opinion and I wholeheartedly support and I can't wait to see some outcomes once we get going.
Thank you councillor Summer. Councillor Patterson?
Yeah, I think one of the most important things we've got to realise is we're all on the same side. We all want the same benefits, the same results, so it's important we work with anyone that's like-minded, which the chamber is. So I'm looking forward to it, I have it worked very well. The money we'll be giving them is basically money from the rates that those shopkeepers have paid, so I have no issue with that at all. I'm sure they'll look after it and use it wisely and I am very much looking forward to working with them to promote the CBD as a whole.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? All the motion? Councillor Hazelman?
Look, I view the MOU as a, as a positive development because for the first time, it'll define the relationship between council and the Chamber of Commerce and that's been ill-defined in the past and on occasion, we've been at odds with one another because we've been moving in different directions. This hopefully will address that level imbalance and of course, there are other, other bodies around who will be part of the process. Look, no doubt that the source of the distribution of the funds coming from the Shepparton Showme will produce some debate, no doubt, that, in the community and no doubt within the Shepparton Showme itself. Of course, we had a bit of a recent hiccup with some national publicity that we didn't need or desire and hopefully, this type of memorandum of understanding defining the roles will ensure that that type of issue won't, won't occur again. And also, it's interesting to see in the memorandum that there is a dispute resolution process, so if we do have issues or disagreement, there is a process in place to deal with them. And of course, yeah, the ultimate is that it's, the council is providing the funding. The funding is the basis of the relationship and that relationship can be measured on the outcomes that we achieve together.
Thank you councillor Hazelman. Any other councillor wishing to speak against or for? I think councillor Abdulla, you're first.
For.
For, correct.
Yeah, just a few words around this, the support for this recommendation. It just shows council's keenness and goodwill in partnering with one of the important organisations in context of economic development in our region. It is council's acknowledgement of the important role that the Chamber of Commerce can and hopefully will play in making Shepparton a great place to work, live, invest and visit. This also reflects goodwill and a positive gesture towards chamber, something which is followed by most, but not all, the local councils. I'm also pleased to see that Greater Shepparton Council has taken a right step at a right time. It is my hope and expectation that this MOU would help build a trust-based relationship between the two organisations where any difference of opinion is addressed in a professional, positive and responsible manner. I would also hope that the chamber's skills and aspirations in stakeholder management, especially media, will complement council's efforts in promoting a positive message about Greater Shepparton, which is great things happen here. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Abdulla. Councillor Orisvari, did you wish to add?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Look, essentially I support it and having been chairperson of Shepparton Showme and on a number of occasions and actually still on the committee and latching on to the commentary from councillor Hazelman, I can indicate that, let it be no doubt, from my perspective, that this MOU and this allocation of funds is not a handout, it's not a, it's not a charity. There's expectations of output and positive comeback from the chamber. The other issue I'd indicate that as far as the funding coming from Shepparton Showme, in terms of what the potential view of the committee members is, I can also say, again referring to councillor Hazelman's commentary, that it's not necessarily a one hundred percent where that funding's come from.
Thank you councillor Orisvari. Any other councillor wishing to speak against the motion? For the motion councillor Sutton?
I just think it's very important that we work together with the business community and by entering into this MOU, it will be the start of a new, an ongoing partnership with the chamber, which can only be for the good of Shepparton.
Good, thank you. Councillor Summer, would you like any closing comments? Well, I think everyone did not appreciate it.
I'll just reiterate what was said through the discussion. Councillor Patterson mentioned that we are all on the same, on the same side and that the money's coming from the shopkeepers themselves, so no doubt it will be spent wisely. Councillor Hazelman said that it would define the relationship between us, which really hasn't been there before, which is spot on. There was some national publicity that we didn't necessarily desire and I'm just glad that there wasn't a knee-jerk reaction to that and that as two councillors said, there is a process now for any kind of dispute or disagreement. We, councillor Abdulla acknowledged the important role of the chamber, mentioned the goodwill and the positive gesture we have in front of us, that there are skills in the stakeholders of the chamber, such as management of media. And councillor Orisvari reminded us that it's not a handout and we do expect some outcomes from this and that there may be division on how Shepparton Showme feel about the budget allocation. And Shelley Sutton mentioned an ongoing partnership, so I would be very surprised if this wasn't a unanimous decision overall.
Thank you for that synopsis of the other councillors' comments. Thank you.
Well done.
Really appreciate that. All said, all in favour? Against? Carried. On page twenty-nine, sorry councillors, on page thirty-one, item nine point two, planning permit two thousand sixteen dash three three zero, use and development of the land for a caravan park and host farm, primary produce sales and restaurant. So, do I have a councillor wishing to move the motion as printed on page thirty-one?
Yeah, I'll move the recommendation, quite a lengthy recommendation, it's printed on page thirty-one of the agenda.
Do I have a seconder please? Councillor Patterson, thank you.
I'd like to foreshadow a motion, please.
Yes councillor Summer?
That...
You don't have to give us the details of the foreshadowed motion, but you've just given...
The further decision for one month to allow cultural heritage overlay development.
Well, thank you, I've noted that, we'll see whether we can get that foreshadowed motion. Now councillor Hazelman?
Do you need to get the word?
No, I don't. I think the details of the foreshadowed motion at this point.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This particular site and applications or a similar application of this site, it's had a long history before council. As I indicated, the previous application, which was similar but of a, of different scale, failed the test at both council and subsequently at VCAT. At the December council meeting, the officers' recommendation for refusal was not, was not successful or supported by council and the subsequent motion resolved that the matter be publicly advertised and as a result of that, we've had a strong and articulate objection from adjacent properties nearby to this, to this site and we've also had probably a strengthened objection from the Goldenberg and Catchment Management Authority. Now, most of the issues relevant to flood behaviour inform the Golden Valley Harness and Greyhound Racing Precinct Master Plan, which is adopted by council in September of two thousand and sixteen. That master plan and the associated planning scheme amendment, also adopted by council, is going through a process, a public process. The CMA objection is substantial and it stands alone. There is no contrary data being presented to either dispute or in any way vary what the Catchment Management Authority has determined. I also note that in, in past meetings, that the other study area that was being considered at the same time as the study area where this particular property is located, that council has expressed no concerns with the CMA flood modelling behaviour. I also note that in the planning scheme amendment, that the CMA will be a determining authority whereas at the present time, they're a referral authority. I think that any move or any suggestion that we move away from what the Catchment Management Authority and/or ignore the very strong objections of the resident would be most misguided by council and I strongly endorse and recommend the adoption of this motion.
Thank you councillor Hazelman. Councillor Patterson?
Yeah, this is a great proposal in so many ways, it would be great for the, for the region it was to go ahead, but unfortunately, it's in the wrong place. It's as simple as that. Our advice has been that CMA will not support it on flood level issues and we've received additional legal advice, that their advice is correct, so, you know, if it wasn't where it's proposed to be, I'd be supporting it, but I can't support it when it sits in the middle of the floodbake.
Good. Any other councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Councillor Orisvari first.
The notice of motion before us tonight is to refuse its application. I thank the officers for their diligence in preparing the necessary documentation to enable us as councillors to make an informed decision. Before I turn to the application itself, I want to clarify the role of councillors in this decision-making process. In our role, we must not prejudge an application. We must consider all the relevant facts and not consider irrelevant facts when making these determinations. We must be open to both sides of the argument. We must consider all relevant issues and not make a decision based upon morality or bias. Having said that, we are entitled to have a strong view as to how we feel our community should develop and the desirability of particular types of development. In short, we must retain an open mind, listen to any contrary argument, weigh up information and the range of competing values and perspectives and be open to be persuaded. I am comfortable, in the context of the current application, that I have done so. I acknowledge that as recently as this morning, there was a further legal advice provided to assist us in our determination. As to the application itself, by way of observation, I note there are eight objectives. I note that the proximity of the objectives was close to the potential development. I respect their democratic right to object. I further note that it does not appear anywhere in the report that the Harness Racing Club is one of those objectives. I note that the application is not supported by the officers because it has the potential to impact on the continuation of primary production land and potential conflict between ongoing farming activities and the proposed rural living uses in surrounding areas. Given that the proposed development has its roots in a quasi-agricultural basis, I'm unable to be satisfied to the requisite standard that the conflict is any higher than potential and I can't support that as a notion to support the refusal of the application on that basis. Agriculture by definition is a science-addled practice of cultivating the soil, producing crops, raising livestock and in varying degrees, the preparation and marketing of the resulting products. Applying that commonly accepted definition to this application, I would surmise that in fact, it does meet the criteria and would value add to the ongoing farming activities in around the area as in my view, based on the material, has roots in agriculture, no pun intended. That the proposed use is contrary to the endorsed GV Harness and Greyhound Precinct feasibility and study and master plan, this it would seem, still has a lot of grey in the final position. There is legal advice in existence and again, I've considered that advice and it does not mitigate exclusively against approval of said application.
Councillor Orisvari, would you like an extension?
I seek an extension.
All councillors in agreement? Carry on.
Thank you. There are two studies we can consider, the Goldenberg and Catchment Management Study of two thousand and two and the more recent incomplete Shepparton Maripna Study. There is no planning scheme amendment in play at this time. Catchment Management Authority is not a determining referral authority...
Excuse me councillor Orisvari, sorry councillor Hazelman.
I'd take clarification that because my understanding is that the adoption of the racing precinct also initiated the planning scheme amendment process.
Can you clarify that? Mr Harriet? The Rajaratnam? Any comment on that please?
I'm going to impinge on my time, is it?
No.
Yeah, takes it all. Talk slowly, yeah.
To the, the master plan for the investigation area and a planning scheme amendment is currently underway but has not been formally endorsed for inclusion in the planning scheme.
Thank you, carry on.
Catchment Management Authority is not a determining referral authority but rather a referral authority and with recourse to the state government referral and notice provisions, Planning Practice Note Number Fifty-four of June two thousand and fifteen, it states that a responsible authority, being council, must consider the recommending referral authority's advice, but it is not obliged to refuse the application or to include any recommended conditions. A recommending referral authority can seek a review of VCAT if it objects to the granting of the permit or recommends conditions that are not included in the permit by the responsible authority. In relation to part C of the recommendation, whilst I accept that it does not appear that the proposed, proposal contains this requirement, that this is something that could be overcome by further consultation, to take a leaf out of councillor Summer's book. Given there is discretion for council to approve, I look at it in the vein that the application, applicant is asking council to exercise this discretion in support of the proposal. I have considered all material and relevant issues, I acknowledge that this is a balancing act, that the proposal is about opportunity to bring a substantial development to the community, to value add and measured against negative outcomes, I believe it should not be refused. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Orisvari. Any other councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Councillor Summer?
I'd like to speak against the motion. Basically, it comes down to the same reasons why I've objected along the way and that is that our own flood study, the council flood study that was done, still remains quite tentative. So I'm basing this on the fact that model...
Sorry councillor Summer, which flood study are you referring to?
The...
The current one that exists?
The one that we've used to base the master plan for the, for the trotting track on.
The Shepparton River Flood Intelligence Project, Mapping Project.
That's the one.
As long as we're clear on that.
The Shepparton Maripna mapping, for future reference. So, I was just saying that that model was not completed by the CMA, we, we completed that ourselves through a consultant. The CMA is the responsible authority and to date, they have not endorsed our plan. This flood study has not yet been the subject of an...
Mr Chairman, I don't think that's correct.
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent of that. Mr Rajaratnam, we may have to refer to you again. What was the comment that we need clarification?
CMA have formally endorsed the Maripna Shepparton Plan.
The plan, they have been one of council's partners in terms of developing the flood study and the flood mapping work.
That answer your question? Good, carry on.
The CMA have not endorsed our study. The flood study has not yet been subject to the amendment of the planning scheme. We may have lodged an application for a planning scheme amendment, but as yet, we still don't know whether it will be successful. And legal advice that we received even today described this as not yet a seriously entertained planning proposal on the proviso, that it has not yet been made into a planning amendment. So, also with the legal advice that we received today, it pointed out lots of grey areas, it took a position, but if you read between the lines, we can definitely see that it's not a seriously entertained planning proposal and it won't be seriously entertained until the subject of an amendment to the plan, until it becomes subject to an amendment of the planning scheme. Also, this flood mapping is incomplete, it's only really for that specific area, has not been endorsed by the responsible authority or even by council for that matter. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't consider our local mapping, but we are tasked with this balancing act and in my opinion, we should err on the side of procedural fairness and base our decision on the two thousand and two CMA flood study, as that is more likely to hold weight at a tribunal as they are the authority on this. So, we are able to commission a flood study for our own reference, we have done nothing illegal there, but given this is unendorsed and incomplete, it arguably does not hold weight over and above the current authorised 2002 CMA flood study. They will both be considered if it gets to our tribunal, this is true, but they may not be given equal weight. We may not win. So, until the flood study is complete, the CMA cannot endorse it. The CMA have merely weighed in on two steps here. One, they've given in principle support for the Greyhound master plan, and two, they've objected to this application based on council's own flood study, which I find surprising. So, we're here to assess the proposal, and I believe it should be allowable. It's a multi-million dollar venture, and I prefer that council take a position that examines the granting of a permit favourably, and or look at both sides, as councillor Azwari was saying earlier. And I believe if we gave them some time to actually put together the CHMP that covers the entire development site within the activity area, we'd have more time to look at both sides of the argument, particularly as some councillors have been following this for years, whereas others still have to get their head around it.
Councillor Summer, would you like?
No, that's enough.
Finished? Good, thank you. Any other councillor wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Abdullah?
Just a few points. The intended tourism and economic benefits of the proposed use and development of land are offset by some important aspects of this application, some of which include, number one, this land is within farming zone and the use of land is unrelated to agriculture. It is mainly focused on accommodation, not related to agriculture. Number two, the land is in the floodway zone and LSIO, land subject to inundation. In this context, council had referred this application to CMA, which is a referral authority in this application. The responsible authority being the council, which must consider the recommendations of the referral authority. The CMA has objected to the proposed development application as majority of the site is located in floodway land, which means that if this development goes ahead, there's a risk that it could result in danger to life and property. In addition to CMA, council has also sought another independent assessment from Water Technology. They have made a similar recommendation, that this land should not be developed due to flood depths. Given the fact that both subject matter experts, that is, CMA and Water Technology, have given similar recommendations, that is, unsuitability of the land for proposed use and development, I'm confident about the rationale behind the council's recommendation for this application's refusal. I also note that the applicants have not provided their own flood risk report. If such a report was available, it could have been taken into account to further evaluate the recommendations given by CMA and Water Technology. In the absence of this expert flood report, CMA and Water Technology's recommendations are the only guiding reports available to use in decision-making on this subject. There are other aspects of this application, such as VCAT has previously refused a similar application on same grounds. In addition to this, this cultural heritage management plan provided was not complete, and it did not cover the entire development site. These to me are compelling reasons to support the overall recommendation to refuse this planning permit application. On the basis of current information available, I do not find any grounds of disregarding the council team's recommendation, which are backed by expert views and recommendations. Thanks.
Point of clarification?
Councillor Summer, did you wish to say something?
Can I please have a point of clarification?
What is that point of clarification?
The CMA flood mapping results, which was the first one from 2002, would the applicant have been allowed to build on that land if we were still using that old flood model?
I don't have that answer, but I'm sure Mr Rajaratnam may have some view on that. No knowledge on that?
The applicant's proposition, the one that's before us, if the flood mapping we used was from 2002.
... of the entire application, and we got advice from the Catchment Management Authority?
The current application location on a flood zone under the 2002 CMA flood mapping.
Mr Rajaratnam, Mr Harriet may partly answer this.
This reflects the approach that the CMA actually take. They do consider, and it's not the CMA's Catchment Management Flood Plane Management Plan, the Greater Shepparton Flood Plane Management Plan, because although the CMA statement, it then goes on to say that- Under that-
Generally.
That's when council at the time prepared that plan. So, I think it goes to the point that the CMA do refer, and the legal advice actually mentioned this, that references made to a range of information that's available, including the 2002 flood plane management strategy that council put together, as well as the latest information in the intelligence report that's progressively been developed, not finished, progressively being developed, and it's not surprising that if we only wanted to consider, I think the question was if we could only consider the 2002 study, what would be the result? Well, we don't know, because when this has been referred to the CMA, they've actually done what the legal advice suggested they should do. They've considered both the previous adopted strategy of 2002 and the latest available information to them.
Point of order, my question was whether it was on a flood zone under the 2002 study?
Through you, through you, Mr Chair. I can tell you, under page 32 of council's agenda, lists the current zoning as well as the overlays that currently exist over the site, and for council's information, that's the farming zone two and the land subject to inundation overlay.
That's based on our intelligence model or the CMA 2002?
Should be based on the 2002 current-
That's based on the current planning-
My question is the prior authorised modelling, what that showed.
Just answered, land subject to inundation.
The current planning provisions for that land indicate that the land's in a farming zone two and a land subject to inundation overlay.
Based on the intelligence model?
Based on the 2002 current flood mapping that this council has adopted, that land, as Mr Rajaratnam just said, is in a farming zone and it is land subject to inundation, as opposed to-
Subject to overlay.
Flood plane. Which is the answer you desired.
That it doesn't make reference to which flood study they're actually looking at in the text.
But I'm not sure what text you're referring to. Said, thank you, Mr Rajaratnam, for your input. Do we have any other councillors wishing to speak for this motion? Well, how about you speak to it, councillor Sutton, and we'll decide whether it's for or against.
Well, I just, I think it's a fantastic opportunity for us to get the caravan park and the host farm, because I think it would be very beneficial to Shepparton, as well as the greater area. But then taking into account the CMA objection, the state's planning policy framework and the council's planning scheme, and the lawyer's advice, I'm just not sure that I can agree to disagree with their recommendation.
Right, so ultimately, you're in favour of refusing this permit application? But you are for the motion then? Good. Any other councillor wishing to speak for or against councillor?
I'd like a comment, Mr Mayor.
Okay, why not? Anybody else here?
I've got to say that I found this particular application and the process that we followed to be extremely difficult, to get down to the nitty-gritty of the tinsacks, if you like. As a new councillor, I think we've asked sufficient questions of staff to make a determination in this, and I think that probably what has swayed my decision is the fact that we have received the advice from staff, we have received the advice from our legal representatives. I think, going back in my working days, I think if we would be remiss not to accept that information, as I think we can be seen as possibly negligent. So, I just wanted to make that comment, and I will vote accordingly when I get there.
No doubt you will. Any other councillor wishing to add further comment for or against this motion? No? Good. That being said, councillor Hazelman, any closing comments? I'm sure you've been waiting for that.
No, I think very interesting to listen to the discussion. I take up the point that councillor Azwari made about councillor's role. I think councillor's role in these particular matters is very, very clear, and is defined. It's defined as being our role is to administer the Planning and Environment Act. That's what our role is, and that means we take into account all of the legislation, regulations and statutory requirements. That's what we deal with. And I think through this process, we've explored that ad infinitum. It's now come to, you know, a decision time. I also note that people who may be of a mind to think, well, you know, we'd like to approve this process, I think it's quite good, but from my perspective, I've never had a briefing in relation to what this tourist farm proposal is. Now, some councillors might be privy to that information, but in my time here, we've never had a briefing from the applicant in terms of the operation of what their tourist proposal is all about. So, in that respect, this application is actually silent in terms of the benefits that can be obtained from this. So, people talking about, oh, what a great proposal. It may well be. That hasn't been tested, hasn't been tested here. I haven't seen a business case in relation to this proposal. All I've heard about is other councillors talking about it. If people were of a mind to support this proposal, it may well be that council's role is, perhaps as councillor Patterson was indicating, maybe we should be finding or assisting these people find another bit of dirt to put their proposal on, if it is of such benefit to the region. The other thing I'm mindful of is too, that in the discussion, if people were thinking about an approval process, we haven't at this stage seen anything in relation to planning permit conditions for such an approval. There's broad speculate, I'll just approve it. What would we be approving? What direction would we be giving our staff if there was a motion to come forward to say, let's just approve it? And I would think that would be a very, very inappropriate motion. There was questions raised about the 2002 flood study, and if I'm not mistaken, I would very strongly argue that the previous application on this block of land for a very similar proposal was considered by council and VCAT under the 2002 flood study that was in operation at the time, and was rejected under that flood study. So, you can infer from that what you like, but previously this land has been considered as inappropriate for this type of development, and the newer flood, you know, information that has come forward probably only makes that a more even difficult hurdle to get across. The other thing I'll remind councillors of, at a briefing two weeks ago, I asked the planning officers could-
Councillor Hazelman, would you like an extension?
Briefly, thank you.
Is this new information?
No.
No, not really. It's not new information, it's relevant. Are all in agreement to extend?
It's not new information, because it relates to the role of the CMA, which we've discussed at great length. I asked the planning officers if they could give me a precedent in this municipality or elsewhere around Victoria of where a municipal authority had ignored the CMA's approved model of flood behaviour, and the silence was deafening. They couldn't give me a precedent of where a council had taken the action that has been considered or inferred by some councillors here tonight. I think the only course of action available to councillors, under our role as administering the Planning and Environment Act, is to endorse the officer's recommendation. That, of course, leaves all of the other stakeholders in this process with their appeal rights at VCAT in place, subsequent submissions to the planning scheme amendment process, and indeed, the Panels Victoria process itself. So, nothing happening here this evening, this motion is successful, is denying rights to anybody. It's in fact just sending this, if ultimately it does end up at VCAT, it's entered to another forum and a different level to be determined. So, I'm strongly recommending that councillors adopt the recommendation.
Thank you councillor Hazelman. That all said, who's in favour of the motion, councillors? Will you call me for a division? Or against? Call for a division councillor Hazelman? Yes, carried. So, the motion is carried?
I'll call for a division, it's to me.
Now, all in favour, please? Councillor Sutton, in favour, councillor Gevenetti, councillor Hazelman, councillor Abdullah, councillor Patterson, councillor O'Keefe. Against, councillor Azwari, councillor Summer, councillor Adam. Item 9.3. Page 50. On page 51, councillors of the agenda, item 9.3, planning permit 2016-331, use and development of the land for a caravan park slash, have I got the right one here? Yes, I have. Including local podgy sales and restaurant, there's a recommendation there, councillors on page 51. Do we have a councillor wishing to move the recommendation as a motion? Do we have a councillor wishing to move this motion, please? Recommendation, sorry councillor Patterson? Do you have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Councillor Hazelman? Councillor Patterson?
Yes, it's basically all been said and done. Same scenario. We have, you know, to me, the overriding issue is the flood mitigation problems, and yeah, we've covered it.
Good. Councillor Hazelman?
I'm not going to revisit the previous debate, Mr Mayor, but, you know, nothing's really changed. It is a different location, but it's drawn the same level of objections, it's drawn the same objection from the Catchment Management Authority, and I think the, you know, all of the argument we had previously applies to this area of land equally.
Thank you. Any councillors wishing to speak against this motion? Councillors wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Patterson, any closing comments?
Been covered, thank you.
Councillors, yeah, good, fine. All in favour of the motion? Clearly put your hands up, because I can't see, sorry. Against? Motion carried. You can have a division, certainly. All in favour of the motion, again, please? Councillor Sutton, councillor Gevenetti, councillor Hazelman, councillor Abdullah, councillor Patterson, councillor O'Keefe. Against? Councillor Azwari, councillor Summer, councillor Adam. Councillors, item number 9.894, the Heritage Grants Guidelines for 2017, there's a recommendation on page 68. Do we have a councillor wishing to move that as the motion?
Sorry, I'll move the recommendation as a motion on page 68.
Would you like to read that out councillor Summer?
That, council endorse the Greater Shepparton Heritage Grants Programme, two, adopt the Heritage Grants Guidelines 2017, and three, resolve to commence the Greater Shepparton Heritage Grants Programme in the 2017-18 financial year, and allocate $25,000 to the programme.
Good, thank you. Do you have a second? Councillor Summer?
I'm in full support of this. We do offer around $300,000 for grants in the community. This one is very new. We've lost so much heritage over the years, and much of it is hidden behind the facade of existing buildings. You can walk through and look up underneath the awnings, and some of these shopkeepers have stripped off the outer layer, and you can see all this beautiful tapestry underneath. I've seen old pictures of High Street when the entire strip had awnings over the footpath, which was just wonderful, and we're talking about this grant, and possibly we could get joint grant applications that could result in something that involves an entire street. I've seen the tops of buildings tidied up with very impressive results. I've seen the tops of buildings tidied up with very impressive results. I really believe that some kind of incentive for property owners to restore and showcase all this hidden or lost heritage that we've got is a step in the right direction. We probably have a lot more than we realise.
Good, thank you councillor Summer. Councillor Abdullah?
Yeah, I would like to say that the recommendation to support heritage grants programme and guidelines will promote a much needed conservation of heritage sites in our municipality. It is good to see some important steps by the council to preserve and maintain our heritage sites. Negligence and lack of care of these significant sites would only mean that for our future generations, there would be no trace of their cultural heritage. It is essential to pass on a sense of pride and legacy to our next generations by preserving our heritage sites. Now, providing financial assistance for maintenance of these heritage sites on dollar-to-dollar magic funds is an important step in the right direction that will promote sense of participation and ownership in these endeavours. Having the heritage grants guidelines will ensure that the award decisions are following principles of good governance, that is transparency and accountability in awarding such grants based on well thought out eligibility criteria. Thanks.
Good councillor Abdullah. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion, councillor Patterson?
I'd just like to fully support both speakers, especially councillor Summer. I don't really think we know what history we have and the facades of shops in Shepparton. They're hidden at present. They have old randers in front that look like they're old, but they're only babies compared to what's up in the facade. And I think as time goes by and people realise that's there and they properly restored and painted, et cetera, we'll have a lot more history in our town than we believe we have. There's some magnificent old buildings, Alpens Building, those sort of buildings, they're all there, it's all up in the front of them. And you just can't see them at present unless you have to be highly elevated, which sometimes we all are. So, yeah, I'm really looking forward to the future. I think we'll be known for a lot of our heritage because a lot of the older heritage stuff around Victoria is wooden, which won't last, but these are all brick and they're going to last. And it's important we look after them.
Good, thank you. Any other councillor wishing to speak against? For, councillor Summer, closing comments? All being said, all in favour? Against, motion carried. Item nine point five, councillors, on page seventy three, Asia Fruit Logistics Expo, Hong Kong, September sixteenth in 2017. There's a recommendation on page seventy three. Do I have a councillor wishing to move that recommendation as a motion? Councillor Gevenetti? Do I have a second to please? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Gevenetti?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think this is the first time that we'll be participating in this expo from, I believe. I think it's a great opportunity for the Greater Shepparton City Council to attend this expo together with growers from throughout the region, to try to engage in businesses in China to come and purchase our products that we have here in Shepparton and surrounding areas. There's a minimal cost associated with this particular trip, and I think it will long term be very worthwhile. I'm just getting a-
Your pants on fire, Bruce.
Oh, and the second one is to nominate a councillor, obviously, who will attend at the Asia Fruit Logistics Expo, as well as a council officer. It's up to me to nominate. I would obviously like to nominate the mayor.
Oh, thank you councillor Gevenetti. Oh, that's it? Okay, fantastic. Councillor Sutton, would you like to add?
Bruce, I'd like to note that it's important that we participate in this sort of expo with growers to speak to the Chinese business people so that we can find new markets in Asia and grow our business.
Thank you councillor Sutton. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Councillor Summer?
It's more of just a comment. Well, I'm in two minds, and I'm going to listen to the debate, and I do understand that this is important to build relations to export to China. And I'm just tentative because we haven't yet adopted the international strategy, which we've listed later in the agenda, but we haven't tried it yet. So the policy is listed as item four point one and the international strategy is not done. So we haven't actually measured the merits of this trip against any set criteria, we've just been told that it's a good idea, and maybe it is. But my understanding is that this event is an annual event, so there's really little urgency to be pushing ahead so quickly. I just would like to know that it's really worth our while. So if I do object, it won't be an outright objection, it would just be more of a deferral until we get our ducks in a row under the strategy that we'll be adopting later on.
Thank you councillor Summer. Any other councillor wishing to speak for the motion? Councillor Orasvari?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Fortune favours the brave. Seize the day, they just roll off.
And the loose lips and ships.
The reality is, if we're fed income about seizing opportunity, there's no time like today. And we proud ourselves as being pro-business, proactive, searching out new markets, trying to support and endorse our growers, touting ourselves with the Great Things Happen Here campaign as a food bowl of Australia. We need to generate impetus, and in order to generate impetus, we need to go to the coalface, and the coalface is Asia. And this expo is the hub, and that's where it all happens. And talk's cheap, action's expensive, and procrastination is endemic. You might have heard that a few times.
I think I may have heard it a few times.
But the reality is that all those three key words resonate loudly and strongly in relation to this notice of recommendation, notice of motion, and I wholeheartedly support it.
Thank you councillor Orasvari. Any councillor wishing to speak against? For, councillor Patterson, I think you had your hand up.
Just one point, I believe, councillor Summer's point, if this is carried, it's a resolution of councillor Sutton, or whatever else happens, as far as I'm concerned. I think other speakers are on to it. Basically, we have a great opportunity. It's a time where there is lots and lots of opportunities for places like Golden Valley to promote themselves. And if we sit there backside and watch it all go past us, we will deserve the biggest kick in the backside you'll ever get. We've got to get out there, we've got to make it happen, we can't afford to let it happen. Has to be done.
Good, thank you.
They totally support it.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Any other councillor wishing to speak for or against the motion? Councillor Abdullah? For, yes?
Just a couple of comments. Yes, it is time to strongly showcase our region's fresh fruit produced to potential markets in Asia. It will build up council's relationship with local businesses and agriculture sector. A joint presence at such expos will also provide enhanced credibility about our local fresh fruit offerings to the overseas markets and investors. I'm sure it will be a positive step towards developing important trade relationships with overseas market. It will be interesting to note the experiences gained from council's participation in the expo and how we could use that experience in aligning our efforts and initiatives to buyers' needs. So that is really important.
Thank you councillor Abdullah. Any other councillor wishing to add? Councillor O'Keefe?
I was actually supposed to be involved in an expo this coming weekend with my business. Obviously, that's not going to happen now. I do that to-
Why?
Because I can't do anything.
So, what?
I can't. But looking at an investment in my business, I look at this the same way as council and our community. It's investing, putting ourselves out there on the world stage. We will walk away learning something, and anything is worth learning. So I absolutely support this. I invested in my own business. I see it as an opportunity, and I think that's what we should be looking at. Much, you know, information, knowledge as we can, and joining with, you know, other countries and putting ourselves out there.
Good, thank you councillor. Okay, if any other councillor wishing to comment? That being said, councillor Gevenetti, closing comments?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We're not talking a bunch tonight, are we? For sure. Haven't had so much discussion in past meetings, but anyway, that's beside the point. What councillor Orasvari said before is very important, that we need to be proactive in this area. If we're not proactive, things can pass us by. And I think if we look at our values that we've set as a council, leadership and innovation are two of them. And I think this particular motion indicates to our community that we are leaders in what we are, leaders in our area, and that we are being innovative in trying to encourage business, to do business in Shepparton.
Good, thank you. Thank you councillor. I would comment, but I would have to leave the chair for me to comment, so, and I'm sure we don't want to upset councillor O'Keefe with her dodgy arm at the moment.
I haven't worried about it before.
It would be broken before. That being said, all councillors, all in favour of the motion? Against, carried. Item nine point six, councillors, the proposed friendship city relationship status between Jin Tan district, China and Greater Shepparton. There's a recommendation on page seventy seven. Do I have a councillor wishing to move this recommendation as a motion? Oh, councillor Patterson? Do I have a second to please? Councillor Gevenetti? Councillor Patterson?
Ah, yes, we have friendship city agreements with lots of different cities and regions around the world. And probably one of my criticisms of council, we haven't basically followed through with them. We've basically got to a stage where some of them just visit every four or five years and we put a dinner on for them, cost us a few dollars and away they go. As far as I'm concerned, they're a waste of time. We need to work at them, and this one is one we need to work at. And I love the sunset clause there, five years and the twelve month review, which will happen. Having said the five years, I don't think it is there now, but there'll be a twelve month review to make sure it is working. We have to have agreements with countries and regions that we actually can, and our rate payers can get a return on.
Five years councillor Patterson is in the first paragraph.
Yeah. Okay, only start from the bottom, yeah. So I'm looking forward to it working, I'm looking forward to it working very well. There's been great connection between our mayor and that region already, so I hope that continues on. And it will be something we can really look forward to in the future as far as serving our rate payer as well with increased export opportunities and the jobs and the growth that goes with it.
Good, thank you councillor Patterson. Before I ask councillor Gevenetti to speak, may I just add some more information to this? On Wednesday, the officials from Jin Tan will be visiting, well, on Wednesday they'll be in, oh, sorry, Thursday, I stand corrected, Melbourne. And we'll be attending myself and the CEO for the signing of this document, if this motion passes tonight. And it will be hosted by the premier, of course, as well, so there'll be a series of friendship status type agreements signed that evening between a number of municipalities and other cities from the Jansu province, and Jin Tan will be the one that we'll be obviously signing with. So as I said, this is a state-based initiative as well, it's not just a regional, isolated relationship in itself. This is fully supported by the Victorian Government and by the premier personally. Sorry, councillor Gevenetti, would you like to add?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. They've come a hell of a long way, if we'd just sort of knocked this on there, haven't they?
Pressure.
All right, it's up to councillors.
That was obviously all in jest. As councillor Patterson has mentioned earlier, I think it's very important that we develop these relationships, and it's good that we've gone back and reviewed some of the prior relationships we've had with other cities, and as councillor Patterson has indicated, some haven't been worth it and have been a waste of money. So I think that that's fair and reasonable to delete those as sister cities and work with new opportunities, as I said before. And obviously Jin Tan is one that we can work cohesively with and develop business associations with throughout the municipality.
Good, thank you. Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? Councillors wishing to speak for the motion?
Just a point of clarification, Mr Mayor, if you could. In relation to the Jin Tan district, what sort of population base are we looking at?
Jin Tan as a city is around the six to 700,000 mark. The province that they fit into, which is Jansu province, is approaching 200 million people. And just for added information, they have the third largest solar manufacturing plant in China, in this Jin Tan. So that's of great interest, I think, potentially to Greater Shepparton. Sorry, any other councillors wishing to speak against? For? For, councillor Summer?
I think so.
You think so?
Oh, I'll just say what I'm saying. So again, I'd have preferred that this was considered at a time after we've endorsed the international strategy, that I've already mentioned the strategy and how important this is moving forward, but I guess we're quite enthusiastic about all this, which is, I guess, terrific, makes Shepparton greater. But as has been mentioned already, we do have a number of dormant friendship city agreements that have been identified in the strategy, and they are either in need of review or of revival. So in an ideal world, we should probably be testing our resources on the ones we already have as friendship cities, rather than entering into new agreements. However, council have been very active in the space of international relations. We want to export all our produce and grow our regional growth product. And my understanding, which we've heard, is that the friendship city agreement has already progressed to the point where Jin Town representatives will be visiting Shepperton on Friday, and there are premier appointments to be held. So I'm told, as Mr Mayor mentioned, that they are major producers of solar panels and other prosperous pursuits could be opportunities. So rather than risk offending them, there's no immediate expense here. I do agree that a friendship city should progress, and I have every trust in offices that targets will be set to justify this outcome.
Setting targets for a friendship.
Setting targets for friendship, yes.
Fantastic. Any other councillor wishing to add comment? For or against? None? Councillor Patterson, closing comments?
No, no, I'll be captain, thank you.
Thank you. All in favour? Against, motion carried. Item nine point seven. Yes, on page eighty three, the Economic Development Tourism and Major Events Strategy for 2017 to 2021. Councillors, there's a recommendation on page eighty three. Any councillor wishing to move this recommendation as the motion?
I'm happy to move the recommendation as a motion.
Second to please, councillor Orasvari? Councillor Summer?
I think the best way to describe this is to read a paragraph out of the agenda, where endorsing the economic development tourism and major events strategy, and I believe it's already working. Generally, rate payers would come up to me and tell me all these terrible things that are happening in the municipality and what are we doing about them. But lately, since we've been having so much success around events, people have been coming up and saying, congratulations. So in the last five years of my experience, that's very refreshing. So I'd like to commend the staff on that. So I'll read this paragraph so people understand what some of the priorities are. Some of the key projects include establishing a grant process that will allow for incentives of new small businesses to commence operation within the region, CBD revitalisation initiatives, support the development of Friar's Street as the food strip of the CBD, facilitate opportunities pertaining to investment in solar within the region, develop an international engagement strategy to guide council in its efforts towards building relationships with overseas investors and capitalising on international opportunities, implement structural reform for the approach to tourism service delivery, support and facilitate the development of contemporary tourist product along the Golden River, and support the development of contemporary arts and cultural tourism, which engages and attracts new markets and the development of food tourism. So that sounds very exciting, and I'll be looking forward to how they roll this out.
All right, thank you councillor Summer. Councillor Orasvari?
No, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Any comment? Any councillor wishing to speak against this motion? For the motion? Councillor Patterson?
Yeah, look, this is one thing that we've done really well. When I say we as a council and as a staff have done it, they're the ones that have done it. We are getting a real reputation for the Bent City. There's lots and lots of events coming, it's providing great employment for motels, et cetera, restaurants, hotels. And on top of that, I really do commend our staff who've done that. And I'm just absolutely ecstatic at last councillor Summer's found some positive friends.
Yay.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Any other councillor wishing to add comments, either for or against the motion? Councillor Summer, would you like some closing comments? All in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, item nine point eight, Economic Development International Engagement Strategy. That's marvelous. We have a councillor wishing to move the-